Good evening, everyone. Time is 6:30 on July 19th, 2022. This regular meeting of the mayor and council is now called to order. Roll call, all council members are present. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Boyd, will you pray the rain away for us?
Lord Jesus, we thank you again for another night, Lord, to be able to do business for the city. Lord, we pray that you give us wisdom and guidance, Lord, as we make decisions, Lord, that would best honor you and for the citizens here in Social Circle. Lord, we thank you to get to recognize some of our sports teams and athletes tonight. Lord, we thank you for the hard work and the accomplishments that they've been able to perform and just excel this year. Lord, we're thankful for that. And we do pray for this meeting. We pray for the rain to quickly move ahead and that we would be able to hear each other and it'd be a good, quick meeting. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
All right, I do have a few announcements. We had a property tax public hearing earlier today in the community room. That was at 12 o'clock. Council meeting this afternoon at 6:30 in the community room. Municipal court is tomorrow, the 20th, at 1:00 p.m. in the community room. Tree board meeting, July 28th, 6:00 p.m., community room. Our planning commission meets on July 26th, and that will, at 6:00 p.m., and that will be at the Social Circle Theater. Our next council work session is August the 4th, 6:30 p.m. at the community room. Main Street Commission meets on August the 9th at 8:00 a.m. at Church at the Grove. Historic preservation meeting, August the 9th, 6:00 p.m. in the community room. Downtown Development Authority of Social Circle meets on August the 11th at 9:00 a.m. and our next council meeting will be August the 16th, 6:30 p.m. in the community room. This afternoon, as Nathan said in his invocation, we are recognizing some of our sports teams. So it's an honor to have you guys here with us this afternoon. What I'll do is ask the coaches. First, we want to recognize the girls varsity soccer team. So if the coaches and those members of the team that are here will come up, we'll have you introduce your team and then we'll read a resolution for you.
Hello. First of all, I need to apologize for the entrance that we made. I did not realize what we were walking into and I literally thought we were going to get blown away or struck by lightning, one or the other. So, we are so thankful to be here and so very thankful for you guys for recognizing us tonight. It was absolutely wonderful season, such a good time, so we appreciate you recognizing us. I'm Coach Richardson, and these are my two assistant coaches. Coach Wilson, she's a language arts teacher at the high school. And this is Marley Ruark. She's a graduate of Social Circle, played soccer for me a few years ago and played also in college, so she came back to help. And we have Lori and Macy. Oh, that's Macy Faith. And Macy and Amelia and Kaylee and Haley. And I'm sorry we don't have everybody, but we have four at church camp, two at the beach, one at softball, travel.
You couldn't get the ones from the beach to come back?
Not at all. I tried. I tried. But this is who I have left and I have a few seniors, so I was proud I could get, at least get a few of my seniors, because they played a huge role. And I have some young ones here that are gonna keep the tradition alive, so hopefully we'll do it again soon. So we thank you.
Thanks. You guys did a great job. We'll begin by reading a resolution. Afterwards, we'd like to, we'd all like to take a picture with us. And then, if you'll stop by and see Ms. Roper, she has an individual copy of the signed resolution for each one of you and for anyone that's not here this afternoon. So we begin, "The resolution to commemorate and honor the 21-22 Social Circle Girls Varsity Basket Soccer Team," not basketball, "on an outstanding season and outstanding accomplishments. Whereas the Social Circle Girls Varsity Soccer Team had a 24-1 record for the season, and the Social Circle Girls Varsity Soccer Team had a 13-1 record in the region, and whereas the Social Circle Girls Varsity Soccer Team won the A-8A Region Championship the first time since 2017, and whereas the Social Circle Girls Varsity Soccer Team reached the state championship match for the first time in school history, and whereas the Social Circle Girls Varsity Soccer Team recorded an astounding 21-game winning streak during this season, and whereas the Social Circle Girls Varsity Soccer Team had 17 shutouts out of 24 games, and their only loss during the season was to Commerce, who they ultimately came back and beat to win the state championship game. And whereas the mayor and council wish to commemorate and honor by this resolution the Social Circle Girls Varsity Soccer Team, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the City of Social Circle do hereby honor the 21-22 Social Circle Girls Varsity Soccer Team by declaring July 19th, 2022, a city day of recognition for all their accomplishments and achievements over the course of their outstanding season, and specifically recognize the following players and coaches. Gracie Bartsch, and excuse me if I don't get all these names exactly right. Gracie Bartsch, Morgan Chambers, Kaylee Cornell, Olivia Cross, Aubrey Ergle, Amelia Lee, Tess Preston, Emma Shane, Rory Stowe, Taylor Wright, Peyton Brooks, Elena Ferguson, Brooke McQueen, Ava Parr, Claire Ray, Addie Strassner, Anna White, Macy Williams, Faith Young, Heather Richardson, head coach, Ashley Wilson, the assistant coach, Marley Ruark, an assistant coach, and Kaylee Kimsey, team manager. So resolved this 29th day of July, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up. Yes, if you will, just stand around in front of us here. Thank you again, ladies. Good job. If you will, stop by and get the...
Congratulations again. Go Redskins.
Thank you.
I would like to say, so I was in Savannah when y'all was playing in the championship game, and one of the council members from Dalton called me, and he said, "Man, these ladies won't quit." He said, "They're down," and he said it didn't even look like they was down. He said, "They won't quit."
Okay, we were down the entire game.
That's what he said.
We tied it up with four minutes left in the game, and then we went to overtime. And then that's when we were like, enough is enough.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, that's great. All right, next up, we are also gonna recognize a couple of our varsity track members that achieved state-level championship. The first one being Jada Hyman. So if the coaches and Jada will step forward, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. It's an honor to be here this evening to present to you this young lady, Ms. Jada Hyman. There's many stories I can tell about this young lady, but I'm gonna stick with what she has accomplished as a freshman at Social Circle High School. Going to Albany, Georgia for the state championship, the word was, "Where is Social Circle?" I kept hearing that, "Where is Social Circle?" Because they knew about basketball and they got a lot of questions about that. I said, "Just open your eyes, buckle up, and stay tuned." Because Social Circle is here to stay. So with that being said, Ms. Jada plays softball and also basketball. She came from the basketball court onto the track, and she kinda tweaked her hamstring, got a little... Said, "Jada, you're gonna be running the 800. We're gonna use that as a rehab to get this hamstring back." "Coach, I don't wanna run the 800." Well, Jada, you're gonna run the 800. Not only did she run the 800, she also broke the school record twice. And with that being said, once we got her ready to compete at the region sectional and state championship, she just kept breaking records. At the beginning of the year, I think she started with 103 in the 400 meters. Well, going into the semis, we were walking in the stadium, and I'm walking alongside Jada, and she had the hood on and I touched her. "Get your hand off me." I said, "That's nerves. She's ready to run." So by the time she finished the preliminaries, I think second place, she was like 58, 57? 58 seconds, and second place was way behind her. Going into the finals of the 400 meters, there was no one close to her. I think second place was one minute, but she had also set a new school record again at 57, whatever that time is phenomenal. But along with that, she was also, because she was state champion, she was also invited to participate in the Night of Champions at Georgia Tech, and she finished, was it seventh place? Eighth place. That's an honor, because not only was she competing against single A, she was competing against single A through 7A, and to finish eighth overall as a freshman, that's an honor. So Jada has represented Social Circle and Social Circle High School, and I also wanna thank her parents for the support that they have given us throughout the past two years that I've had the opportunity to work with Jada. But ladies and gentlemen, your state single A public, state champion in the 400 meters, she was also state runner-up in the 200 meters, and she was fifth place in the long jump. So Social Circle, here she is, Ms. Jada Hyman.
Jada, we're proud of you, and I know your parents are as well. We'll go ahead and get the, read the resolution. Afterwards, we'll have a picture with you, and then you can pick the resolution up from Ms. Roper. "The resolution to commemorate and honor Jada Hyman. Whereas Jada Hyman is in the ninth grade and a member of the Social Circle Varsity Track Team, and whereas Jada Hyman attended the GHSA Class 1A Public in May 2022 in Albany at Hugh Mills Stadium and captured the 400-meter dash state championship in the time of 57.96, setting a new school record previously set by herself. And whereas Jada Hyman also was the runner-up in the 200-meter dash in a time of 25.26, also setting a new school record. And whereas Jada Hyman placed fifth place in the long jump with a jump of 16 feet 9 inches, outstanding. And whereas the mayor and council wish to commemorate and honor by this resolution Jada Hyman for her outstanding accomplishments both personally and to the Social Circle Varsity Track Team representing Social Circle Schools. Be it resolved that the mayor and council of the City of Social Circle do hereby honor Jada Hyman by declaring July 19th, 2022, a city day of recognition for all of her accomplishments and achievements over the course of the 21-22 season. Mr. Tim Kemp, the head coach, Holly Huckstat, assistant coach, Thomas Russell, assistant coach, and Michelle Genvich, I guess I said that correctly, is also an assistant coach. This is so resolved this 19th day of July, 2022, so set by my hand and seal, signed by myself and the four council members. So thank you very much." You want your mom and dad in the picture? Thanks again. Any of the council members like to say anything to Jada, the coach?
Uh, yes. The only one she broke records in high school, she started in middle school.
Middle school.
Yeah, I had the opportunity, the pleasure of watching her run, and I'm gonna tell you, she's fast.
Talk about your daughter, too.
Yeah.
She's up and coming.
Yeah.
Congratulations again, Jada.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we'll have a resolution to commemorate and honor Phillip Baines.
I think everybody should know Phillip. I think we call him Petey. Phillip also plays football and basketball, and he's gone, since last June, Phillip has been on the basketball court, right onto the football field, onto the basketball court, and right in the track. So Phillip told me, "Coach, I'm gonna break that record. I'm gonna break that record." Well, Phillip has competed in the 110 hurdles, the 200 meters, the 400 meters, the high jump, the long jump, the triple jump, and the relays. So we sat down to determine about Phillip, which events we are strong in that will represent that, well, he has a strong chance of becoming state champion, and he decided, well, we will do the triple jump and the 300 hurdles. But what happened right before the region meet, Phillip dislocated his shoulder the day before the region meet, and I'm like, "Phillip, you done, man." "No, Coach, I'm competing." "Phillip, unless I get a note from the doctor or the trainer, you're not competing." "No, Coach, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it." Phillip, the next day at the region meet, I'm in the bleachers, and Phillip comes over, "Coach, I'm gonna do this, Coach. I'm gonna break the record, Coach." Phillip jumped 44 feet. I didn't give you permission to do this. I don't have a letter. But he wins the triple jump at the region meet. And he also qualified in the 400 hur- no, in the 300, in the 300 hurdles, but the long jump was left out. So we go to the region meet, Phillip is still gimpy with his shoulder, and he told me, "Coach, I'm gonna break this record." Phillip breaks the record again. We go to the state championships, and Phillip telling me, "Coach, I'm gonna break this rec- I gotta, I have a new technique, Coach. Just let me land on my butt." Phillip, you losing two and a half feet landing on your rear end. "I know, Coach, but let's, just let me try it." Now, understand this, Phillip is the highlight of the meet, because even the judge, he was having, he was calling Phillip's name, "Come on out of that ditch, fella. Let's get this thing done." So when he did try, I said, "You know, I have this rule. If it doesn't work your way, it's done my way." So he did do it, landed on his rear end, and he took a while to call out the measurement, and he said, "46 feet 1 inch." I just walked off, because if he had jumped, if he had hit it with his feet, probably would've jumped 48 feet. But Phillip is a heck of a competitor, and also, he was also invited to compete at the Night of Champions at Georgia Tech. Was a little tired there, but he did finish 11th overall. Just being on that stage, I call it the big stage, and the honor of being, of representing Social Circle now in the 300 hurdles, he was the fastest 300 hurdle going in, and in the finals, they disqualified him, saying he dog-legged the hurdle going around the outside. I protested up until the last second, because as I told him, I said, "I know he didn't go around the hurdle, because he's not a hurdler, he's a jumper." And the pictures showed it, and even the video in the stands showed it, and as I told him, "Y'all have done Social Circle wrong once already. I'm gonna fight." And thank God to Commerce. Commerce kinda put the nail in it, because they had something to say, because they had a gentleman that was, once he was disqualified, they moved him into the eighth spot. But as Phillip told me last year at the state championships, I need to remain humble and focused. So that's been our, our rule, is here to stay humble and focused, and this, he has been, been humble and focused. And also, let me state this about these two students, they do very well in the classroom also. And Phillip is also being recruited by several colleges for football. But ladies and gentlemen, where is Social Circle? These young men, young, young men and women have represented Social Circle very well. And let me say, congratulations again to the soccer team. But ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Phillip Baines, you're state champion.
You know, thank, thank you, Mr. Kemp, for recognizing all the other, the other teams. You know, we have great athletics in Social Circle, and I never thought I would be, be saying that, to be honest with you. But you guys are top-notch. You make us very proud for all of your accomplishments, from basketball to soccer to baseball, football, doesn't matter, all, all teams excel, so we thank you for what you do. We'll read the resolution, same thing, you come up and get a picture, and then pick up your resolution on the way out. This is to honor Phillip Baines. Phillip Baines is in the 11th grade and a member of the Social Circle Varsity Track Team. And whereas Phillip Baines attended the GHSA Class 1A Public in May 2022 in Albany, Georgia, at Hugh Mills Stadium and captured the triple jump state championship with a jump of 46 feet and 1 inch, setting a new school record previously set by himself. And I must say, I don't know that I could walk 46 feet without tripping myself, but to jump that far, I mean, I just can't, I can't imagine doing that. So that's, that's great, Phillip. Thank you. Whereas the mayor and council wish to commemorate and honor by this resolution Phillip Baines for his outstanding accomplishments both personally and to the Social Circle City Varsity Track Team representing Social Circle Schools. Be it resolved that the mayor and council of the City of Social Circle do hereby honor Phillip Baines by declaring July 19th, 2022, a city day of recognition for all of his accomplishments and achievements over the course of the 21-22 season. Mr. Tim Kemp's head coach, Holly Huckstat, assistant coach, Thomas Russell, assistant coach, and Michelle Genvich, assistant coach. Grevich. Grevich, okay. I must have the spelling incorrect on, on here, but we'll correct that. This is so resolved the 19th day of July, 2022, signed by myself and the four council members. Phillip, congratulations, and thank you very much for being here tonight.
Let me thank someone else, too, Mr. Phillip Baines, his father, for the support that he's given. We may bump heads on something, but this young man right here, he does a great job.
That's good. Phillip, Tim, come on, come on up. Okay, I'm gonna pause for a couple of minutes. You know, I don't expect all you guys to stay. I appreciate you being here. You're welcome to stay if you want to, but the rest of this might be pretty boring to you, so I'll give you an opportunity to leave if you like. There again, you're welcome to stay.
And so, talking about triple jump, so what's so amazing about it is that, so you one leg, next leg, other leg, and when you're jumping, you need your shoulders and your arms to get you from there.
And you bust it out.
Yeah, so that's, that's more amazing, knowing the shoulder nerve.
Think about the lop you have to get just 40 feet, and that's getting up there.
All right, we will continue now with the employee introduction and recognition.
Yep, we have one person to recognize tonight. Come on up, Denise. I know this is somebody who needs no introduction, but she is here under different circumstances tonight. I think that after her last meeting here, she was kind of hoping she'd never have to come to another one of these again. But we're very fortunate to, to have Denise express an interest in working for the city, and she is serving, sitting up at the front, front window, serving as administrative support specialist for the city, supporting Barbara, Susan, myself, and pretty much everybody else in City Hall. And so, I wanna recognize Denise Etheridge. Anything else?
Just, I'm really happy to be here and enjoying working with everybody, and just having to learn.
Thank you, Denise. Welcome to the city. And it's a little different, seeing you here, rather than sitting there with the Walton Tribune, writing down everything we do, so.
Well, I will say, I will say, we were all very excited when we saw her resume.
I'm sure.
You know, with the talents that she has, especially on the writing and the journalism side. You know, she's able to bring something that, you know, a skill set that we don't have in the city right now, so.
Absolutely.
Very fortunate to have her.
Yeah, thank you. Any, any others?
That's the only one for tonight.
Okay. All right, downtown rundown.
Thank you, Mayor. We're gonna start out tonight talking about our back-to-school celebration. This event has changed from a free supply giveaway. Instead, it's going to be a big party for kids of all ages to celebrate a new school year. Everything at the event will be free. The back-to-school celebration will be held in Friendship Park on Friday, July 29th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. So far, we've got 15 vendors signed up to provide games, treats, and activities for all of the kids. We've got DJ Daryl, who will be there playing music, will have face painting, hot dogs, cotton candy, drinks, and a dunk tank with lots of teachers signed up to participate, so that should be fun. Students that are needing supplies will be able to register with the school system. They have, they'll have staff members there with an iPad, will direct those people that are needing supplies to them, they will fill out a quick form, and then the children will have their supplies waiting for them on the first day of school. So please let anyone know to ask, there still is an opportunity for supplies to be received. We're just not physically handing them out anymore at this event. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to direct them my way. Coffee and conversations in the circle, our next coffee and conversations will take place on Wednesday, July 27th, at 9:00 a.m. at Tim Plate. Thank you for that autocorrect, Mayor, today. This is a monthly networking meeting to share information on community happenings and what's going on in businesses, churches, clubs, and organizations. It's open to everyone, so please share and invite anyone that would be interested to come and join us on the 27th. And then last on my list for tonight is the summer concert series. Our final concert in the summer concert series will take place in Friendship Park on Saturday, August 13th, from 6:00 to 9:00. This is a little change, we're used to having concerts on Friday night, we're doing this one on Saturday, and we're gonna extend it by an hour. We will have Josh Millwood and the Sandy Creek Band featuring April Allen, so please make plans to join us. Any questions?
Any questions for Amber? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I don't know of any citizens' requests, though we have any council requests? Hearing none. Next item is the... will take place in our August, August meeting. So this is a second of our public hearings on property tax millage rate. Mr. Taylor, will you handle that for us, please?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. When the budget was adopted, and it was, was proposed and adopted for the fiscal year, it was done assuming a millage rate of 7.9 mils. This is the same millage rate that has been in effect in the city since 2016. However, because of, of the fact that we had new properties added to the, to the tax digest, and there were some properties that were reassessed over the course of the year, city will be collecting more tax revenue, and because there's more tax revenue being collected, this, the state of Georgia deems that a, a tax increase, even though the millage rate itself is not changing. Because of the, of the difference, the state recommended millage rate would be 7.7, 7.72 mils, 7.702 mils, that's the rollback rate. And that makes a difference of about 100,000, or of about $7.92 for every $100,000 of value for those who have had a reassessment over the course of this year. Because state deems it a tax increase, even though it's not a difference in the millage rate, we are required to have three public hearings. We held the first one this morning, we had one person show up for comment. And the second hearing is scheduled for tonight, and the third hearing will be at the August meeting, at which point the millage rate will be hopefully adopted.
Thank you, Eric. This is a public hearing, so I'll entertain any comments from the audience, either for or against the millage rate increase.
I just have a question.
Yes, sir. Will you, will you come forward, please?
Yes.
Tell us your name for the record.
My name is John Goerder. Mainly, I just need clarification. The current millage rate, what was it?
7.9.
And what is the proposed?
The, the, well, the proposed, that where the city is proposing is 7.9. The state recommended rollback rate is 7.702.
And that's the one that the hearing is over, is the 7.02? Or 7.7?
It's actually for the 7.9.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, John, there's, actually, it's very confusing even to us, you know, sometimes these things, you, you have to, under the regulations of the law, as Eric explained, you have to advertise these. Theoretically, it only affects those people that either built a new house here in the city, or they had a reassessment in value. The value has risen, therefore, the dollar amount goes up with that, but the millage rate does not change, and we're not proposing a change to that millage rate. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right, hearing done, I'll close the public hearing. Any, any comment from the council? All right, our next, next public hearing is for 434 South Cherokee Road, is a variance for a carport in the side yard.
Mr. Mayor, normally, this is something that our zoning administrator, Barbara Slageter, would handle, however, she is on vacation this week, and so Chief Sadel is going to be presenting in her place.
Okay.
For some reason, these pictures are in black and white. I don't know if they're hard to see, they actually look cooler this way, but, but they are in black and white. I don't know how she got the pictures in black and white, but she did.
That's better. It's a historic household, it fits. All right, old household pictures. Thank y'all, I'm gonna.
Turn, turn the mic on.
Thank y'all. I'm presenting on behalf of Ms. Barbara this evening. This is a request to build a carport in the side yard. We've received a request to, for, to grant a variance to build a carport in the side yard. Our ordinance states that the accessory structure would be built in the rear yard. This property was recently renovated, and the concrete parking pad was put on the side of the house. This property also has a sewer line running under the house, which will be corrected with the new sewer line when they ran on South Cherokee. The carport design has been before the Historic Preservation Commission. If the variance is approved, the Historic Preservation Commission has recommended a few conditions for the COA. The Historic Preservation Commission approved the application for certificate of appropriateness at the regular meeting on June 14, 2022. The certificate of appropriateness is approved for construction of a carport located adjacent to the house as shown and detailed in the application. This approval is based on the following conditions discussed and agreed upon at the meeting. Construction of the carport, location, dimensions, and building material will be as detailed in the application and its attachment. The gable areas at the front and back of the carport will be closed with wood or hardy plank material of the same type and style as matching the house. Staff would recommend consider approval of this variance request, and the carport will be built according to the HPC standards. I'll try to answer any questions, but.
Any questions for Ken?
What you said, they have doors and they're enclosed?
The gable areas has to be, front and back of the carport will be closed with wood or hardy plank material.
Open like this, is the top. That's what I'm saying.
It won't be open, their recommendation is to put hardy panel, hardy plank cord.
It's open.
It's open on the sides, yeah, yeah, open concept. And those are cedar shakes, I believe, as roofing material.
I will say personally, not this, but I had the opportunity to tour that residence the other, about two weeks ago or three weeks ago, and they done a spectacular job of bringing an old house back to life.
All right.
Public hearing, you have to open the public hearing first, though.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me open the public hearing, is there, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you come forward, give us a little idea of what you're, what you're doing here?
I'm Josh Thompson, and what we're doing is, we are going to, this is not really representative, it's more representative of the structure itself, but the, what we're gonna do is, is make it as close to the house, especially the front porch of the house, as we can. The, it'll be painted white, it'll have a black roof, shingled roof like the house does now. And then the gables, which they asked us to cover with cedar shake, which is kind of part of the front of the house, we have a little cedar shake in the, in the bump out in the front. Well, we're gonna wrap the columns here, these, we'll wrap those just like the columns on the front, paint them white. So we're trying to keep it as close to the house as we can possibly make it, so that's sort of our plan.
You want this other picture?
Which one? The one with the stop?
Yep.
That one or the other one?
That one, stop. You said, you said you're gonna get closer to the house as you can, can you just point like you're gonna get?
Well, I'm not gonna get as close, I mean, as close as far as the way the house looks and the building material and, and kind of the structure.
When you're parking a car, you still will have the wall.
Yeah, so what will happen is, the, basically, the front of it's gonna be about here, so we'll still have a walkway.
Gotcha.
Okay, that's, kind of goes, it goes this way, so that'll not be covered, it'll just be our cars, two cars, basically, it'll be covered.
So Josh, you, I said cedar shake shingles, but I was wrong in saying that, you have asphalt shingles, is that correct?
Right, we have black.
And the, the gables will be covered with?
With the shake.
Shake.
Yeah, and then we'll paint all of it white, because everything on the house is white, except for the black roof. There's some gray, it's, it's kind of two different types of white, so we'll, they, like, the columns are wrapped, they're white, and then they have a little bit different shade on the bottom, so we'll do all that and make sure it matches that front porch as close as we can get it.
All right, any other questions for Josh? All right. Thank you, sir. I'll open the public hearing. If anyone is here that wishes to speak for this application, please come forward and state your name.
All right, I'm Lynn Mills with Historic Preservation Commission tonight. I just wanted to offer a little bit of an update, and you covered everything that I was gonna say, the cedar shakes is the very triangle part of the house. So instead of the hardy plank, it, it got updated and clarified through the Planning and Zoning or the Corridor Commission, had a great idea to go ahead and match the triangle.
Right.
So I think that, that works really well. And I just wanted to say, normally, we don't recommend having these things in the side yard, we prefer in the back. Along this portion of Cherokee, there's been a lot of trouble, kind of accessing, having a flat spot, so that also led to the, the approval for, for us to, I guess we were mainly the look of it, but that, that's been a, up and down the corridor, an issue with putting something in the back. So we, we approve and want to offer our support.
Yeah, thank you, Lynn. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the application? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a decision.
Set the application as, with the stipulation to the historical review.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Josh. All right, next up, we have public hearing for 586 North Cherokee Road, conditional use zoning. Actually, this, this application was tabled by Planning and Zoning Corridor Commission at their, at their meeting, so it was advertised that we would hear it tonight, so because of that advertisement, we will not accept comment, but we will take a motion to table this to our August council meeting, if I can get that motion.
Second.
Have a motion from Teresa, second from Steve, any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda, Mr. Taylor, if you'll guide us through that?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, we have five items on the consensus of this evening. First item is approval of amendments to the mayor and council regular meeting of June 21st, 2022. Second item on the agenda is amendment to the flood plain damage prevention ordinance. This was actually a direct response to a, a direct request from the State Department of Natural Resources and clarifies some property that's been annexed into the city since 2016, and also clarify some definitions. So really not much to that, other than just really cleaning us, cleaning up some things on the state level to more match their guidelines. Item number three is approval of revised parking and speed ordinance. This particular item addresses specifically some parking areas in the downtown. Takes some areas that were previously deemed no parking, and makes them now parking available where practical. Also specifically addresses the four parking spaces we have in the downtown that are deemed golf cart parking or motorcycle parking only. Currently, our police department is not able to write tickets because it is not part of any kind of a local ordinance, and so this will actually fix that. The next item is an approval of revised speed zone ordinance for low-speed vehicles. We've had a request from citizens of Social Circle to extend the areas where golf carts are allowed, and so this will extend the golf cart to just north of Freshway on North Cherokee, and south to Spring Street, and this will be a resolution that can be approved by the council that still needs to be drafted because we need to send that up to the state for their approval since it's G dot, since it is a highway. And the final item is a resolution to properly identify the name of the Social Circle Development Authority. When the Development Authority was formed in 1988, it was formed under the official name of the Development Authority of Social Circle. To my knowledge, it's never been referred to that, and so we need a resolution to correct that, and so this will officially rename the Development Authority of Social Circle to what we know it as, and that being the Social Circle Development Authority. We do recommend approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Eric. I'll entertain a motion to approve, specifically requesting that item number four be approved with the condition or the expectation that that will move to the state level after proceeding here. So move.
Second.
Have a motion from Tyson, second from Steve, any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Unfinished business, don't know of any? New business? We have consideration of an IGA within Walton County for T-SPLAST, Transportation SPLAST.
Mr. Mayor, City of Social Circle and the other cities of Walton County have been working with the county for proposed transportation special purpose local option sales tax that will be placed before the voters in November of this year. If this is approved by the voters, it's a 1% tax that will be collected between April 1st, 2020, 23, to March 30, 2020, 28, generating an estimated $80 million countywide. This is, the dispersal is based on population countywide, and because of that, the city is expected to receive 5.1452% of the T-SPLAST for an estimated total of $4,116,160. The city's proceeds will be dispersed between the following projects. General roadway improvements, $2,366,160. Miscellaneous sidewalk and drainage improvements, $1 million. And asphalt patching, resurfacing, and striping, $750,000. The IGA is ready to be voted on, and we do recommend approval.
This motion will authorize my signature on the IGA, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Have a motion from Nathan, a second from Teresa and Tyson, so take your pick on that one. Any, any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is consideration of an IGA with Newton County for special purpose local option sales tax.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on the Newton County side, in which we have six residents of Social Circle live in Newton County city limits, which deems us eligible to participate in the special purpose local option sales tax that Newton County is proposing, putting before voters in November. There's still some details that are being worked out as, you know, as we speak tonight at the Newton County Commission meeting. But generally speaking, I think the, the basic terms are in place, they just need to be worked out on the Newton County side. So what we're asking for tonight is, is an approval of the IGA, subject to the attorney's final review, and, and if he's good with it, and then we'll get, get the mayor's signature. But the six people that we have in Social Circle, it is a population-based agreement once again, similar to the Walton County side, and we'll get a little less than $7,000 based on the six people. And not a whole lot you can do with $7,000, and so we are proposing that our dispers, that our, our revenue be placed in a category called general transportation improvements, which allow us to spend that money on anything that falls within that category, it could be, you know, depending on what the need is over the next, over the terms of the SPLAST. Most likely, I predict it would probably be going towards some kind of sidewalk construction of some kind.
Is that limited to the Newton County side?
That's just the Newton County side.
Yeah.
And the money, and the money has to be spent in Newton County.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we've looked at this, and, you know, we really don't have any roads in Newton County. The sidewalk and master trail plan that the city adopted a couple of years ago does have. that falls within that category, could be, you know, depending on what the need is over the next, over the terms of the SPLAST. Most likely, I predict it would probably be going towards some kind of sidewalk construction of some kind.
Is that limited to Newton County side?
That's just the Newton County side.
Yeah.
And the money, and the money has to be spent in Newton County.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah. And, and, you know, we've looked at this, and, you know, we really don't have any roads in Newton County. The sidewalk and master trail plan that the city adopted a couple of years ago does have some sidewalks proposed for Newton County, and I think, you know, as the city expands more into Newton County, as population grows in Newton County, I think that will be a need.
Where's our six, the six residents over there?
They're on Hancock.
Well, we may, we may get stuck with, the census says there's five, and I'm having that conversation with the, with commissioners, but we, we may get stuck with five, six would give us a few more hundred dollars, but...
Yeah, the, depends on which official census record you look at. The, the one that we had, Georgia Regional Commission pull for us, says we have six. Honestly, it'd be faster for us to go door to door.
Yeah, and if they would allow you to do that, I'd do it all over the city, but, yeah.
But, you know, it, it is what it is, you know, of all the counties in Newton County, the way Newton County is set up, really all they need is Covington's approval for this, and they're gonna get that approval. At the end of the day, it really doesn't matter what, you know, New Bern, Social Circle, Mansfield, or Porterdale think, or Oxford thinks. And so, you know, it's money that's available to us, we need to take it.
That's the only thing, we, we don't have anything over there, so I mean, that's about the best is to wait.
Yeah. Newton, Newton County is not as liberal on the, on the split between county and cities as Walton County, but...
Yeah, and, you know, one of the items that I think they're trying to flesh out tonight is, is there is proposal, I think what it is right now is an eighty-twenty split between the county and the cities, and I think one of the options on the table, correct if I'm wrong, is seventy-eight percent, twenty-six percent.
That's the last number I heard, yeah. Whereas in, in Walton County, our, our previous SPLAST, I believe, was sixty-forty, so. So anyway, the, the residents, I know where two of them are, Tyson, but I couldn't tell you where the other...
Yeah, you know, there, there, there is a house down at the end of Lakewood. I think Susan Wall's property is in Newton County, and there are also a couple houses out on Hancock that are in city limits. And, yeah, recommend, recommend approving this.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Motion from Tyson, second from Teresa. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Don't know of a need for an executive session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Didn't take long on that one, did it? Take, take your pick. We got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Adjourned.